There's no one we're streaming. All right, good afternoon, everyone. I call to order this meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, June 17, 2025. And I will turn to Ms. Smithers, who will be providing our land acknowledgement today.
Thank you, Mayor Crowezer. As I was scrolling through the agenda for today's meeting and just thinking about much of the work that I do at the town and that we do as a town, it struck me as I was thinking about today's land acknowledgement how much of the work we do, the discussions we have, and the decisions we make are about the land and impact the land that we live on and that is around us. And I appreciate the opportunity to start each of these meetings, grounding ourselves in that, because there's a weight to these decisions. And they impact people's lives and livelihoods and the quality of the environment that we get to appreciate and enjoy every day. And it's humbling to think about the work we do and the meetings we have and the discussions we have in that way. So really, that's what I've been sitting in and just wanted to share that as an opening to my land acknowledgement today. So with that, I want to acknowledge that we are all treaty people. And as we gather here in the Treaty VII region, we are on the lands, the traditional homeland since time immemorial of the A'arhe Nakota comprised of the Good Stony Bear's Paw and Chiniki Nations, the Blackfoot Confederacy comprised of the Gynae, Pekani, and Siksika Nations, the Tzatzina Nation, and the Battle River District Four Metis. And I commit to truth and reconciliation. And I appreciate working in a town and in a community that commits to that as well. I think we saw some of that this weekend for National Indigenous Peoples Month in our celebrations. And we see it just through these acts of land acknowledgements. So, and I honor that and I respect that. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Smithers. All right, and turning to approval of the agenda then. I'm going to move that the Committee of the Whole approve the agenda for the June 17, 2025 meeting as presented with one amendment. And that's to add as an item, inserting an item D3 and then renumbering the one that follows to D4. And it's going to be entitled Alberta Municipalities Award of Excellence Nomination. So with that then, I will call the vote. All those in favor, carried unanimously. All right. Okay, I'm now going to move that council close the meeting to the public to prevent disclosure of advice, recommendations, or policy options developed for the public body in accordance with Section 24 Sub 1 Sub 1 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. All those in favor, carried unanimously. All right, so as I noted, we're going to be in a closed session for about half hour. We will certainly advise...
I'm going to move to the next item of our agenda under delegations. Our first delegation is Tourism Camor Cananascas, specifically the Regenerative Tourism Action Plan. Ms. Ludwig, welcome to Committee of the Whole. And Ms. McClatt, are you going to do a little intro?
I am going to do a little intro.
Perfect.
Mayor members of council, Eleanor McClatt, manager of economic development for the town of Camor. Rachel Ludwig is CIO for Tourism Camor Cananascas. And as part of our funding agreement with TCK, we asked him annually to do a report to council on the accomplishments in alignment to town, the town's sustainability goals and effects. And that's what some of the funding agreement is tied to with the Town of Canmore. And they have some really great announcements and work that they have accomplished in the past year. So for that reason, Rachel Ludwig is here to share with council.
I should have my mic on there. Welcome to Committee of the Whole, and whenever you're ready, the microphone is yours.
I'm about that. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me, Mayor and Council. Thank you for including me in today's session. I'm excited to share the progress that we've made in our strategic plan vision to become leaders in sustainable tourism. And I think June is a great month to give this update to you, considering we head into our busiest time and see the realities of a booming tourism industry so vividly. Next slide, please. We continue to be the fastest growing tourism region in Alberta. Since 2019, we have seen an impressive 59% jump in visitor spend from 633 million to 1 billion in 2024. That's right, we hit $1 billion. That's a big milestone. And at TCK, we remain focused on this growth strategically. Our strategy is to build visitation outside of the busy summer season into the shoulder and winter seasons. So we are pleased to also report that the fastest growing month for visitation were September and October. Can you hit the next slide, please? The percentage growth of visitor spend is reflected by the line on top. And you can see that October visitor spend has increased almost 100% from 2019 to 2024. Growing shoulder and winter season is important to ensure steady employment income for staff employed in the industry and also for businesses in secondary industries like bookkeepers and cleaning businesses. Destination development plays a critical part here. The spas that are currently under development will help with giving visitors a reason to come during the shoulder and winter seasons. And as I mentioned during the downtown A R P process, looking at the possibility of a conference space is also part of a strategic growth opportunity. Next slide, please. We are also looking closely on where visitors are coming from, and we are making strides to attract visitors from farther away that are staying longer and spending more. Almost one third of our visitors are coming from overseas in the U S now, one quarter from our traditional strong market of Alberta, and the remainder from other provinces in Canada. Next slide, please. Another piece of database strategic decision making is looking at comparable destination. And one of them is right next door, and it's called Banff. In 2024, our neighboring destination reached a visitor spend of 1.7 billion, with 42% of this visitor spend coming from accommodation and roughly 21% each from food and beverage and recreation and entertainment. If we are comparing this to Canmore visitor spend, it is a different picture. Accommodation in Canmore makes up a larger percentage, and visitor spend on recreation and entertainment is much less with only 15%. And I'm bringing this up because we are currently working to better understand what this should mean for our town. And considering that we are at the second half of our strategic plan, is that something that we are okay with? That our Canmore visitors are spending their money in Benf probably? Or do you, do we want to keep them here a little longer? And also, infrastructure needs to be updated accordingly, parking, washrooms, all part of that. But visitor economy is more than the growth that we see. It affects every corner of our community. And this is why our vision to become leaders in sustainable tourism is so important to this organization. Next slide, please. To review, in 2019, we developed the Community Tourism Strategic Plan with a lot of input from the community, and it was anonymously approved as a planning document by council in 2019. In it, we identified that there needs to be a purposeful and deliberate effort on the part of the community and businesses to find common ground and work toward a shared vision for tourism. Because of that, in 2021, with the support of the Tourism Task Force, the Town of Canmore released a Canmore Tourism Framework with a shared vision that Canmore is a community of hosts and visitors committed to regenerative tourism. Regenerative tourism means that we are leaving this beautiful place with a healthier environment, happier community, and stronger economy. We used the framework and distilled it down to an action plan with the help of 28 community members and stakeholders. And that brings us to April of this year. We were thrilled to release our Regenerative Tourism Action Plan rooted deeply in both the strategic plan and framework, outlining our steps to become leaders in sustainable tourism. Next. The triple bottom line approach guided the creation of the five strategic pathways that make up our Regenerative Tourism Action Plan. These pathways will enable TCK, our businesses, and our partners to ensure that the growth of the visitor economy in Canmore and Cananascas has a positive regenerative impact on the people who live and visit the region, as well as our local ecosystems and the entire planet. We want to see action immediately. After all, we are aiming for 2027 for the completion of the full plan. We have set this ambitious timeline not only because our strategic plans vision only goes to 2029, but it also has to do with the fact the organization is going to dip into reserves on the execution of this plan. If there is no evolution of our funding model by 2027, we will probably have to shift gears and revert back to being a destination marketing organization, giving up on our shared vision. The actions outlined in this strategy are in line with the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals for 2030, which aim to build a healthier, safer, and more sustainable planet. Over the long term, taking action on this regenerative tourism strategy will establish Canmore and Cananascas as a Mecca for transformative travel and sustainable experiences, ultimately boosting the triple bottom line of people, planet, and prosperity. I was hoping to give each of you a printed copy, but we only printed a few because we are sustainably consciously. So go to our website, explorecanmore.ca slash sustainability, and you can see the plan there. The five pathways of the plan tie directly to the nine pillars outlined in the framework and other high priority areas to make a meaningful change in the short term to lay the foundation for long-term benefits for people, planet, and prosperity in Canmore and Cananascas. The capstones of the tourism framework, climate action and truth and reconciliation, are reflected in pathways number one and two. There are some specific actions in each pathway, and I'll cover each with some of the related action items below. Our first pathway, decarbonization, recognizes that the number of overnight visitors to Canmore and Cananascas will grow with the addition of more short-term accommodations in Canmore Long Bow Valley Trail, for example. And for that reason, we need to work even harder to decarbonize, decarbonize our industry. Reducing emissions will support U N reduction goals and help reduce the local impacts of climate-related disasters like flood and fire. We look forward to partnering closely with the Town of Canmore to understand what portion of greenhouse gas emissions the visitor economy is responsible for and establish targets for emissions reduction in the visitor economy. We hope to work together to implement a program to help businesses leverage funding initiatives for climate action and decarbonization. And I'm happy to share that we have already made a significant action. We are now signatures of the Glasgow Declaration on Climate Action and Tourism, where we are committing to cutting global tourism emissions by at least half over the next decade and achieving net zero emissions by 2050. The second pathway recognizes that sustainability is deeply interwoven with the health of the indigenous communities. We plan to support and strengthen local indigenous communities by removing barriers for indigenous-owned businesses. One way we are doing this is by offering free associate memberships to Tourism Canmore Cananascas and supporting indigenous tourism Alberta as well as an indigenous member by paying membership fees to that organization. To effectively steward indigenous participation, it's critical that the wider tourism community continuously facilitate an inclusive culture in our region. Raising awareness about indigenous heritage and the present-day lived experiences of indigenous peoples will help cultivate trust and understanding. This leads to more opportunities for collaboration and partnership, driving growth and resilience in Canmore and Cananascas. The third pathway, nurture, business, and community, has the most action items. Local businesses and our community are the engine of the visitor economy in Canmore and Cananascas. We believe businesses' success in our region goes hand in hand with regenerative tourism. Our objective is to ensure that the visitor economy drives business growth while enhancing our local culture and our quality of life, all the while preserving the natural areas that make this place so special. Just a few of the many action items here include to provide businesses with guidance and mentorship through the lens of regenerative tourism, to work with businesses to improve their operations in line with our sustainability goals, and help them find new opportunities to boost their bottom line. Of course, we are planning campaigns to continue to help increase shoulder season travel as well. Pathway four relates specifically to minimizing the environmental impact of tourism. We can all agree that for many, nature is the main event. Preserving the vitality of the natural world in our region is essential for the growth of our visitor economy and the health of our own community. Our objective is to get more people to commit to acting with respect towards our local ecosystem by increasing awareness around and proving the reach of our pledge to the peaks program. I hope you all signed it, by the way. We will partner with all our local businesses to further incentivize visitors to give back and invest in projects to rehabilitate ecosystems, reestablish natural habitats and preserve areas that are culturally and spiritually significant for the indigenous community. The final pathway relates to how we tell our story. We need to share all the steps we take towards a sustainable visitor economy. This serves a twofold purpose, building a culture of sustainability in our region and compelling visitors to get on board with our values before they arrive and to increase the likelihood that they play an active role in regenerative practices during their stay. So we are aiming to earn international recognition as a leader in regenerative tourism and transformative travel. To get there, we need to tell the stories and of how we are doing this in a way that connects to both locals and visitors alike. And I'm super happy, the other week, Milena Nikolaeva, who is a behavioral psychologist that specializes in sustainable travel behavior, came to the region and she read the action plan and said that makes us a leader in North America for sure. So that was really good to hear. And that's what I had for you today. I'm hoping that you're all as excited as us to get started on this plan and looking forward to working with you on it.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Ludwig, and thank you for the presentation. And congratulations on a, on a world-class plan. I do want to note, just for those who are watching the streaming, that some of the slides did not translate well, and it must be something on our end where we didn't recognize the font in the materials you provided. It was all formatted very lovely. So I just wanted to note that. Opening it up to questions, Counselor Fober.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you, Ms. Ludwig, for your presentation. How do we balance the need for new opportunities in our visitor economy with our responsibility for stewardship? And how does this plan, how does the action plan address that, what I see as a conflict point at some point in times? Thank you.
There's definitely some push and pull there, right? And that's why we are always referring back to the triple bottom line approach because every piece of the puzzle needs to be healthy in order to have a healthy ecosystem. So we do that by, for example, looking at markets that stay longer and come here during shoulder and winter seasons to attract travelers that spend more money. So, for example, I was in Mexico City currently because WestJet launched a new direct flight from Mexico City. And we know that Mexican travelers like to come to Canada in the winter. So that's a strategic decision that we go and make to then invest some money with our partners that travel Alberta in the Mexican market. And that's on the carbon emission side, that's, you know, why are we going further away when we're looking at more carbon emissions? We do, but we're looking at direct flights because they have in total less emissions than if it would be a stopover somewhere. So, yeah, there's no easy answer and no one directional answer, but it's a big piece of the puzzle. We will be hiring for a sustainability manager that hopefully will be able to guide us even better into that realm. But it's not an easy answer, that's for sure.
Thank you for that question. Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Your Worship. Ms. Ludwig, I'm always inspired by your presentations and the vision that you have for sustainable tourism. And I think a lot of people's reality out there is a little different than what that vision is. And, you know, getting there is, is an important thing. You know, Banff National Park will be free this summer. There are many people that say we're, we're full already. And, you know, just yesterday, we got an email about, you know, over tourism in Spain. I wondered, how do you help, how do you help us get from that vision, this current reality to the, to the vision that you've, you're proposing?
I think it will be a team approach. It will be Tourism Canmore Cananascas leading on the tourism side, working closely with the Town of Canmore. We are working with your sustainability department on a few initiatives. For example, we just agreed to funding some of the reusable cup programs that will be coming on board. But the key is to really grow the shoulder season and grow visitor spend over the number of visitors coming here. Because I think sometimes you feel a little helpless because visitors will come here regardless of whether we are here or not. So I see our role as Tourism Canmore Cananascas, as a destination management organization, to exactly do that, manage the growth and manage the visitors that come here. And we do that, for example, with the pledge to the peaks program, right? Where we ask people, and we have so far 1,600 signatures, which I call a success because they're not only signing the pledge and commit to being good stewards of this land, but we can also educate them on what it means to recreate responsibly in our mountain region. They might not know that depending on where they're coming from, right? So, and we approached administration to see if we can do more on the pledge to the peaks in the public realm in Canmore. Can we deckle some garbage cans, for example? Can we purchase some more of the beautiful wooden frames that you have to put the pledge to the peak signs in, right? So it will, will be a whole, everyone, all hands on deck approach. But everyone will have their part to play.
Yeah, I look forward to helping you fulfill that vision.
Counselor Fober, another question?
Ah, yes. There were a couple things in the Regenerative Tourism Action Plan that I found interesting. One was the Global Destination Sustainability Index, which sounds jargony. But how does that help us know when we get to that place of success?
Yeah, that's, thank you for that question. I had, only had 10 minutes, so I could put that into the presentation. The Global Destination Sustainability Index is an international benchmarking tool for destinations to, to look at their people and planet line, to see how we're doing there. And we're not leaders yet, not even in North America. We are kind of middle of the pack. But we are growing year after year after year, although the questions that are asked and the supporting documents we need to provide are getting harder and harder every year. And we are expecting another few points again for 2025. So this is really how we measure our success on our vision. And without that measure, we wouldn't know how we're doing, right? To, to Counselor Graham's point, there is a lot of issues that residents might see when they can't go through the intersection as fast as they used to in the shoulder winter season.
And then it mentioned a Regenerative Tourism Action Plan Working Group or stewardship committee. What's the vision for that and, and how does our community get involved to make sure that we're all teams approach?
We, yes, thank you for that question. We will have more information on that in the fall. The idea is that we had the Tourism Task Force that came together that was made up of administration from the Town of Canmore and the Cananascas Improvement District, as well as the mayor was part of that. We had community groups part of it, like the Biosphere Institute. But we want to re-envision that to make it a bit broader, so we're currently looking into that, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming. Dr. Cottle.
I don't have a question, but I did just want to acknowledge, given that answer that you just gave, as an administrative member of the Tourism Task Force, and that was a significant lift for us and for you, and a really important, a lot of involvement across the community during the pandemic to create that document. And I just want to acknowledge. And I just want to acknowledge that where you've taken this and this, this framework that you've created is really in line with the spirit and intent of the final report of that group. So I, I think you've really taken that work and brought it forward in a very meaningful and consistent way with the work of that group. So on behalf of the group, thank you for, for that.
Thank you, that means a lot. I hate plans that are collecting dust on shelves.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Cottle, and I certainly concur. And thank you for being with us today. We're going to have our next delegation and then we'll take a break. So our delegation is AltaLink, and it's the 54L Transmission Line Rebuild.
That's right.
Mr. Walden, welcome to, wow, we've got, we've got quite a, display going here. Welcome to the future. And any time, any time that you're ready, the microphone is yours.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, Mayor Custer, and members of council. I'd like to introduce two members from AltaLink. Firstly, Colin Harvey, he's the municipal and community relations manager, and Sean Heffernan, who is the senior right-of-way planner with AltaLink. They're here to talk to you about their transmission line rebuild, a portion of which goes through the town of Kenmore.
Welcome, gentlemen, and thank you for being here today. The microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Appreciate you giving us the time to come here today. So, yeah, so we're here to talk about AltaLink's proposed 54L Transmission Line Rebuild. So I'll just give a brief overview of AltaLink and then turn it over to Sean here to walk you through the project details. Next slide. So, oh, one back, there we go. So AltaLink is Alberta's largest transmission provider. So we were created in 2002 when TransAlta sold their transmission, or their regulated assets, sorry. AltaLink purchased the transmission side of their business, Forest Alberta bought the distribution side. So our service territory there is in the dark blue. And so we have over 13,000 kilometers of transmission lines in that area, over 300 substations, and really service the large majority of Alberta's, as we're in the more heavily populated area of the province. And we're, we're owned by Berkshire Hathaway Energy. Next slide. And so this diagram here is just to kind of show generally the flow of power in Alberta and kind of where AltaLink fits into that mix. So starting on the left, we have our power generator. So in the province, that's your gas, wind, solar, and hydro. So as those companies generate electricity, they push it up onto the transmission system, and that's where AltaLink comes in. So we operate our transmission line and facilities between 69 kilovolts up to 500 kilovolts. And so we don't actually own the power that goes down the transmission lines, we only own the facilities to move the power. So we take the power from the generator, generators and move it to the areas that require that electricity, where it hits our substations and we reduce the voltage of the power at those substations and move it on to the distribution side. So in this, in this area, that's Fortus. And so Fortus are the ones who actually physically connect your homes, farms, businesses, et cetera, and deliver that power to, to your doorstep. And then in between there, you have your retailers. So that's your, Easy Max's, Direct Energy's, whoever you're purchasing your power from on the retail side. And then just a note at the bottom there that the electricity in Alberta is generated, sold, and bought on the wholesale market, and that's managed by the Alberta Electric System Operator. So just to give a brief overview of kind of the key industry players in the electrical industry in Alberta, these, these are the four major ones. And so I'm going to start in the top left and work my way around. So first, we have the Alberta Electric System Operator. So they're our independent, not-for-profit planners. So their whole job is to operate and maintain our, or operate our grid 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're the ones who connect customers to the grid. They're also the ones that decide if new transmission lines or substations are needed. So we don't get to make that decision, the Alberta Electric System Operator does. And they're also the ones that, like I said, manage the sale of the, of the electricity. Below that would be the transmission facility owners. So that would be organizations like AltaLink who own and operate the, the transmission systems. We have the distribution facility owners, that would be organizations like Fortus, who own, operate, and maintain the distribution facilities. And all three of us fall underneath the Alberta Utilities Commission. So they're the independent regulatory bodies. So we, all three of us do a variety of filings with the Alberta Utilities Commission to essentially get approval to operate and maintain our portion of the Alberta's grid that we need to. Case in point with this project, we will be filing a facility application with the Alberta Utilities Commission for approval of the project once we get through our process here. So I'll turn it over to Sean now, and he'll, he'll walk you through the project.
Hi, good afternoon, nice to meet you. As mentioned, I'm Sean Heffernan, I'm the right-of-way planner on the project. We have an existing line called 54 Line that runs from our Kenmore substation off of Elkhorn Boulevard here in the town of Kenmore, all the way out to the town of Banff. That 54 Line was originally built in the 1940s, and so it's reached the end of its life. So in order to make sure that we're maintaining a reliable supply of power in the area, we want to rebuild that line. As Colin mentioned, we have to obtain an approval from the Alberta Utilities Commission prior to doing that. And prior to filing an application with the commission, we have to do a stakeholder engagement program, talk to stakeholders in the area around 54 Line. So that's the stage we're at now. We originally started talking with the public about rebuilding 54 Line in 2021. And at that time, we were focused solely on the portion of the line outside of Banff National Park. This time around, we're restarting that program and we're including the entirety of the line all the way up to Banff. Over to the next slide. Outside of Banff National Park, 54 Line is about eight kilometers long. It's an overhead line, as most of our lines are, and we're planning on rebuilding it overhead, with the exception of two segments where we're considering underground for the line through Harvey Heights and along Elkhorn Boulevard here in the town of Kenmore. So we're going to go out and consult with stakeholders in the vicinity of the line in those two areas on both an overhead and an underground option. We also have a short segment of line where we're, we're working on a potential relocation of the line near Palliser Trail to just free up some developability of two parcels in that area as well. And then in order to make sure Banff has power during the rebuild, we have to build what's called a temporary bypass transmission line, since 54 Line is the main, really the only source of power for the town of Banff. And then lastly, as part of the project, we want to conduct vegetation management activities on and outside of our right-of-way to make sure that we have sufficient clearances around the line. We have a component of the project that's in the Banff National Park. Similarly, we'll be conducting a consultation program in Banff. There's some extra approval, approvals that we need from Parks Canada there as well as the Alberta Utilities Commission. We have a detailed impact assessment process that we're going through on the park side, but otherwise, it's, it's a similar scope. It's a rebuild of the line with a temporary bypass and a vegetation management program associated. We're planning to use mainly what we call a monopole structure or a single pole structure to rebuild the line. We do anticipate needing some two-pole structures or H-frames at places like corners where the line changes direction or if there's a longer span or something that we need. The materials that the poles will be made out of are the weathered steel or a self-weathering steel. Those are a browner colored pole as opposed to a typical metallic colored steel pole. We find that the weathered steel blends in a bit better, particularly in a forested landscape, and they don't, they don't have the kind of metallic glint that you can get when sun hits a metallic pole. We recently installed some of those structures actually on our 113 line out along Highway One near Lac de Arc, and we have some of them installed on a line of ours between Lake Louise and Banff as well. As mentioned, we are going to consult with stakeholders in Harvey Heights and along Elkhorn Boulevard about an option to bury the line. We want to make sure that the public is informed about what, what that entails if the project were to be approved as an underground transmission line in that location. Essentially, at the end of either, at the end of, either end of the underground segment, you'd need what's called a riser structure. That's a bigger, more robust structure than one of our typical single pole structures. And the construction involved with the underground is more involved than, than one might initially picture. It's, it's not like plowing in a fiber optic cable, it's, it's excavation and pouring of a concrete duct bank that the conductors end up encased in. And so those factors, the more involved construction and the, the additional materials with the riser and the concrete, mean that oftentimes underground can be more expensive than overhead. However, in these two particular areas, we think that some of that added cost of underground might be offset by not having to do some of the vegetation management that we might otherwise do in those areas. And we'll talk about that a bit more on an upcoming slide here. I mentioned the temporary bypass. Banff's on what's called a radial, so 54 Line is the only connection that Banff has to the rest of the bulk electrical grid in Alberta. So we are planning a temporary bypass line. That's what it sounds like, it's temporary and it bypasses the areas where we're working on construction of 54 Line. The alignment would run from one of our existing transmission lines called 85L near Palliser Trail and then out on, along Palliser Trail, Harvey Heights Road, and Highway One out past Harvey Heights, where it would then cut up to our existing right-of-way and be located in our existing right-of-way, the west, the rest of the way into the park. And in practice, the temporary bypass is, you know, it's, it's, it's temporary and it's only in place really when we're working in the particular areas that we're working in. We're likely to do the actual construction of 54 Line in segments, and so the temporary bypass will kind of move with the segments that we're working on. Wildfires are on everyone's mind right now. We've had some wildfires in our service territory that we've been monitoring over the last couple, last month or so, and we've had some lines affected elsewhere in the province by wildfires. One of the most important things that we can do to manage wildfires is to do vegetation management in the vicinity of our transmission lines. So we pay attention to something called a danger tree, which is a tree that's tall enough that it could fall and contact our line. In the vicinity of 54 Line, we've identified danger trees that would require us to access areas up to 25 meters beyond of the existing right-of-way to manage them. So in, in Banff, the vegetation management program is going to be part of our application to parks. Outside of Banff, on provincial crown lands, we want what's called a vegetation control easement, which allows us to go onto lands, the crown lands adjacent to our, our line and conduct those vegetation management activities. And in the town of Kenmore and Harvey Heights, we also want access to private lands to do that vegetation management. When I say private lands, I'm lumping in with that town of Kenmore lands as well. There are some lands where we have vegetation management that we want to conduct as part of the project. Right now, we're at the stage where we're scoping out the, the specific areas and specific trees that this would apply to, and we will talk to any applicable landowners about those areas. We need to include that information in our application with the Alberta Utilities Commission as well. And as I kind of intimated earlier, if we were to pursue an underground option and that was approved by the Alberta Utilities Commission, then the, the vegetation management that we need to do beyond the right-of-way boundaries is, is much more limited then.
I did note the buzzer went, but I also note you only have two more slides, so please go ahead and finish up.
Yeah, and I'm, I think that's the bulk of what I had.
Apologize for that. Yeah, so just really quick, just a note on who we talked to. So we talked to all the affected landowners on Kenmore. We talked to everybody, we actively seek out everybody in the first row of houses along the, along the line, and then we notify out past that, I think 200 meters, no, yeah, 200 meters, I think, yeah. And then we, we also talked to First Nations, industry stakeholders, environmental organizations. We also talked to the local authorities as well, provincially and municipally as well to, to make sure that we understand the impacts of, of the project as we move forward. So just quickly, our, our schedule here, so our mail-out actually just went out on Friday, so stakeholders should be starting to get it in their mail probably around now. So we'll, we'll be consulting with everybody from June to November on this project, targeting and filing a facility application in early, in early 2026. And assuming that that gets approved by the Alberta Utilities Commission, we'd be looking to start construction late next year, with it taking us to about 2030, just because of some of the timing constraints we have through Banff and, and everything, it's going to take us about four years to construct, three to four years to construct it, so. And that's our presentation, so we'd be happy to take any questions and thank you for your time.
Great, well, thank you for being here and for making this presentation, bringing us up to speed. I also very much appreciate the, the materials that you sent out by email to make sure that the stakeholder or the interest holders are, are kept up to, up to speed. I really appreciate all of that communication. There are a couple of questions here. Counselor Fober.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. When it comes to burying the power lines, are there other benefits to that other than a visual benefit? Like, is there improved resilience in your network from like a wildfire, say? Because there are other things that, that come with burying power lines.
Yeah, I think there's different pros and cons associated with it. So obviously, from a wildfire perspective, with it being underground, there may be less damage to the, potentially at least less damage to the actual facilities. The trick we have is though, too, if we lose one of those conductors in there, we do have to dig that back up to get back at it, to fix it up. So we usually, we would normally put in like a redundancy, and I think it's every 500 meters there are splice faults where these lines would connect. So we would have to get into that splice, which is kind of like a manhole essentially. And so we'd have to, we would reconnect to that second one, to that backup one, to be able to keep it energized. But then we'd also have to go dig it back up to go replace that conductor that failed, where with the overheads, it's a lot faster. We lose a conductor, we can pull up a bucket truck, get our guys up on there, they can climb the poles, we can reattach it and go. So there's, there are pros and cons to, to, to the, to the underground solution, yeah.
I should have asked, are there pros and cons? But I do appreciate that. How often do they fail? How often do you have to replace these lines?
So our overhead lines are kind of designed for that 50 to 80-year mark, so this one's kind of hitting that, we're in that 80-year mark type idea. So that's kind of what they're generally designed for. So, and we do maintenance throughout the life that might be able to extend that past that at different times, but generally, that's what we're, we're aiming for. The underground, I don't know what, the design might be similar, I don't know exactly. Yeah, similar timeframe for those.
And then like in my first question, when you talked about replacing one that fails, how often do those failures happen?
So I, I don't have a good, good number for that. So we, like, because most of our lines are rural, we're for the most part overhead, we do have some small segments of underground, and I know we've had some that have failed at times, and there can be different reasons for that, but I don't have like a, a good stat that, on how, how often they do. No, yeah, no, I don't have anything specific, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Ma.
Thank you, Worship. Thanks for your presentation, gentlemen. So, so the lines service life about 80 years, 85 years, and these new ones, similar timeframe? So is the question, the, the new one, similar timeframe?
Yeah, yes, like, what's the service life, about that 80 to 85, or are they getting more resilient now?
I think what we say is a 50-year timeframe. Now, as the lines age, we're doing inspections regularly, right? And so you can extend the life of an asset potentially if it's in good condition and by doing component replacements and things like that. And I know on, on 54 Line, we've done some, like, isolated component replacements and things in the past. But we're at the, at the stage now where still half of the poles are the original poles and, yeah, so we're, we're, our assessment is above the entire length of the line warrants you rebuild.
And with respect to say the Elkhorn Boulevard area and the Harvey Heights, what tips the decision to move it from an overhead to an underground? Is that just residents willing to pay or some other constraints?
It, it's in consideration of the cost to do the, to do the vegetation management associated with the overhead segments. The, the rebuild of 54 Line will end up being funded through our tariffs, so ultimately through all of the ratepayers in the province. So we need to be prudent with how we're spending those costs. Oftentimes, we find that underground's a more costly solution, but in this particular circumstance, because of the cost of, of the vegetation management program, and particularly as it relates to accessing the private properties adjacent to it, that the, the, the cost difference might be offset by not having to do that work with an underground program there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Graham.
This one's a little bit random, my apologies. There's a super old transmission line that runs along the CP railroad tracks from basically Harvey Heights, or no, sorry, Exash to, to Banff. Wonder, whose liability is that? Is that a AltaLink liability? Wonder, whose liability is that? Is that an Alton Lake liability or is that a CP rail liability?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, it's not, like, it's not our line. We don't own that line. I'm pretty sure Fortis doesn't either, but, yeah. You're talking about those short squat ones that have those little...
Yeah, they've been laying in the dirt for decades.
Yeah, no.
Just curious.
Yeah, sorry.
I wonder, I'm going to speculate wildly. I wonder if that's a telegraph line.
It might have been an old telegraph line. Yeah, it's got the glass balls on it still.
And it's got the, this is a digression.
Totally, I'm sorry.
Exactly, the glass balls on it. Yeah, I guess the answer is we, I don't know.
Just curious.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time today and for the efforts that you are making to make sure that all of the interest holders are informed. It's very much appreciated.
And if you do, if any of your constituents reach out to you, have questions and you would like answers, feel free to reach out to me at any time, and I'd be happy to get you those answers.
Great. Thank you very much for that offer. All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good rest of the day. We're going to take a 10-minute break now and return at 2:40.
I am, yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to introduce Catherine Knouse with Ipsos. She's joining us virtually to present the results of the 2025 Citizen Perspective Survey. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Knouse.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen, so just bear with me a minute. And if you can let me know when you can see that, that would be great.
Looks like something's happening here. Just one second. I'm going to turn on the clerk's mic in case there's any suggestions. What we're seeing is that you started to green share, but we don't have what you're sharing.
Could you maybe stop sharing and then try it at start again?
Sure, I'll try that. Hmm. I keep getting an error message. Let me try one more time.
If I can share it on my end, if that works for you.
Yeah. So, so the clerk will run the presentation, and you'll just have to advise. Oh, there we go.
It's working now?
Great, yes. Please, please proceed.
To love technology. Okay, well, thank you very much. My name is Catherine Knouse, and I'm a director with Ipsos, part of Ipsos's Public Affairs team, with a main focus on municipal government research. And thank you for having me here today to present the results of the town's 2025 Citizen Perspective Survey. There is a lot of material to cover today, so I'm going to move through things as quickly as I can, and then I just ask if you can hold any questions or comments until the end. There will be time to address those once the presentation is complete. Just wanted to quickly begin with a quick overview of the objectives and methodology. So the main objective of the survey is to understand and monitor residents' perceptions and priorities. And here we're looking at a wide variety of topics covering both perceptions of Canmore as well as the town itself. This survey is conducted every few years, and the last survey was conducted in 2023. So the methodology for this year's survey is consistent So the methodology for this year's survey is consistent with past surveys. Ipsos conducted four hundred telephone interviews with a random and representative sample of adult Canmore residents, and everyone was asked a series of upfront screening questions to confirm that they met the criteria. The survey was fielded in the spring between April second and sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The final data is weighted by gender and age to ensure the characteristics of the sample match that of the population in Canmore, according to the most recent census data. And overall results based on a sample size of four hundred have a margin of error plus or minus four point nine percentage points nineteen times out of twenty. That is based on that overall sample of four hundred. If we're looking at any kind of sub-samples, those will have a larger margin of error just because we're dealing with a smaller sample size of respondents. And then two last things to quickly touch on before diving into the results. As I mentioned, the survey is conducted every few years, so there's a lot of value in looking at not only where things stand this year, but also comparing this year's results to past surveys to understand how attitudes and priorities are changing, identify newer emerging issues, and also monitor perceptions of the town's performance. So I'll be doing that analysis as we go through this presentation. And then lastly, as we go through the presentation, and you'll note that I'll also make reference to how the town's results compare to our database of municipal norms. These norms are based on research Ipsos has conducted with other Canadian municipalities within the past five years. We do a lot of this type of citizen satisfaction research, and our database is continually refreshed with new results as, as new surveys are done, they're entered into that database. And it does include a mix of municipalities, different sizes, types, and locations across the country. But for the purpose of, of the comparisons that we're looking at, it's based on research we've conducted with other Canadian municipalities in the past five years. So diving right in, the first thing we're, we're gonna look at is important local issues. So what do residents feel are the most important issues facing the community? This is an open-ended question, so citizens aren't prompted in their responses, they're free to say whatever is on their minds. And then we do the coding of these on the back end, and here we've used, used nets. And a net is a combination of two or more mentions that cover a specific theme, and the intention there is to give a sense of the overall priority assigned to each of these buckets. Residents are asked to provide their most important, next most important, and here we're presenting the total mentions as well. So you can see this year's results in the chart and how it compares to past surveys in the columns to the right. As you can see, social issues are the most important issue facing the community. Nearly half of residents, forty-seven percent, mention some kind of social issue on a top-of-my-basis. This is consistent with what we saw in the last survey in two thousand and twenty-three. But if you'll look at that tracking data, you can see that social mentions really did jump between two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three, from eighteen percent to forty-seven percent, and that's been maintained this year. As to what's included in that social bucket, it's really about housing. So mentions include affordable housing, just general housing mentions, and availability of housing. There's a very small number of poverty mentions as well, but when we're talking about social issues here in this context, it's really about housing-related issues. Growth and development places second, garnering twenty-eight percent of mentions. That's consistent with what we saw in two thousand and twenty-three. And that does include a variety of growth and development-related issues, focusing on things like sustainable growth, the level of growth, tourism, Three Sisters Development, population growth, et cetera. There's no clear third-place issue that really stands out from the rest. So residents' priority has a number of different things, so transportation, fifteen percent. That includes things like traffic congestion, parking, and transit. Transportation-related mentions have gone down this year as compared to two thousand and twenty-three, so it used to be twenty-one percent, now down to fifteen percent. And that is echoed throughout the survey as well. Just overall, there seems to be a little less emphasis on transportation-related issues this year, a little greater satisfaction with these kind of things, suggesting the town has made some progress in addressing some of those transportation concerns since the last survey. The economy garners fourteen percent of mentions, and that's really about the cost of living. It also includes things like employment and jobs and attracting business. Thirteen percent mentioned miscellaneous items that don't fall into these other buckets, and looking as to what that includes. It's primarily about taxes, budget, and public engagement. And the environment also sees thirteen percent of mentions. And here we're seeing things like preserving the environment in green spaces, climate change, general environment mentions. Mentions of the environment have increased from two thousand and twenty-three, so six percent to thirteen percent. There's also been an increase in mentions around wildlife management, up from three percent to eight percent, so that ties into the environment as well. So taken as a whole, it does indicate there's greater awareness and concern for some of these environmental issues this survey as compared to past surveys. This is a question that we have a norm for, but the, the buckets that we use to code the responses into are a little bit different, so I can't give an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but I can say that social issues, particularly housing, it's not unusual to see those top the public issue agenda in other communities. It does tend to be the number-one issue identified by residents these days. Moving on to quality of life. Overall perceptions or quality of life are positive and similar to what we saw in two thousand and twenty-three. So this year we have ninety-two percent of residents rating the quality of life as good overall, including forty-eight percent very good and forty-five percent good. Only seven percent of residents rate the quality of life poorly. And like I said, that's similar to what we saw in two thousand and twenty-three, when there was a, a total of ninety-three percent good. This is one metric that we did see slip a little between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-three. Been maintained this year, but this results are still quite positive and on par or even a little bit higher than the norm. The norm there is eighty-nine percent total good. We also asked residents how they felt the quality of life had changed in the past three years. And you can see here that despite overall positive perceptions, there is a sense that quality of life is, is declining. So we have half of residents saying they feel the quality of life in Canmore has worsened over the past three years. Another forty-one percent say it stayed the same, and only eight percent of residents feel that it has improved. And that feeling of a declining quality of life is consistent with what we saw in two thousand and twenty-three. Again, this is one metric that jumped between two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. Persistent feeling that things have been heading in the wrong direction for the past few years. In comparison, the norm is twelve percent improved, forty-two percent say the same, and forty-four percent say worsened. So it's not unusual to see a, a large proportion of residents these days feeling the quality of life in their community has worsened, perhaps a little bit stronger in Canmore than we're seeing in other communities. But having said that, keep in mind that norm is based on the past five years. And anecdotally, I can say if we're just looking at, back at the past two or three years with communities we've worked with, this is one measure where we have seen that worsened proportion tick up. And I think it speaks to a lot of the challenges that have been facing people over the past few years. And in that vein, we did ask residents who felt the quality of life has worsened and open-ended question around, well, why do you say that? And here you can see the top mentions for saying the quality of life has worsened. The number-one mention relates to growth and development. Forty-four percent of residents mentioned some kind of growth and development issue. That is up from two thousand and twenty-three, more in line with what we saw in two thousand and twenty-one, and I'll circle back to that in a minute. Cost of living is also coming into play here. We have twenty percent of residents mentioning the cost of living. Cost of living was actually the number-one mention in two thousand and twenty-three, so we have seen a bit of it that slipped a little compared to, to the last survey. And I think what we're seeing here is two thousand and twenty-three was really when the cost of living was peaking. Everything was getting quite a bit more expensive. It's now a couple there, years later, inflation is cool a little bit, maybe people have adjusted their budgets to meet some of those cost-of-living pressures. And so while the peak inflation was happening, we saw those cost-of-living mentions spike. And now that maybe the immediacy of some of those things has gone down, we're seeing the growth and development come back up. So it's not like those growth and development concerns necessarily ever went away. They were just kind of temporarily put on the back burner while people dealt with that cost of living. And now that that's eased a little, we're seeing growth and, growth and development come up again. Housing availability and affordability also comes into play at fourteen percent. And I suspect some of those mentions are gonna be tied into growth and development and cost of living as well. Those issues kind of all tend to be connected in some way. Moving on to perceptions of staff and council. Satisfaction, majority of residents are satisfied with the way the town is running the community. So we have sixty-five percent overall saying they're satisfied with municipal government, including council and administration as a whole. Satisfaction is a little bit higher for administration than council at seventy-one percent versus sixty-six percent. But overall, majority of residents satisfied in all of these areas, and this year's results are comparable to what we saw in two thousand and twenty-three. Also generally consistent with the norm. The norm is sixty-eight percent for municipal government as a whole, seventy-five percent for administration, and council is sixty-one percent. So satisfaction with council is actually a little bit higher in Canmore than the norm as well. Next up is importance of and satisfaction with town services and programs. First thing we'll look at is overall satisfaction. Majority of residents are satisfied with the overall level and quality of services provided by the town, so eighty-six percent, including thirty-seven percent saying very satisfied, forty-nine percent saying somewhat satisfied, only thirteen percent are not satisfied. Very similar to what we've seen in past surveys, and this is on par with the norm at eighty-five percent. We also looked at the importance and satisfaction of eighteen specific services. So first thing we'll look at is the importance that residents assign to each of these services. There's too many services to include on one slide, so we've split it into two. So here are the most important services overall. You'll see that really, residents do value the services that the town provides. All of the services are rated important by the majority of residents. For example, a hundred percent of residents say fire and rescue services are important. Ninety-four percent of residents say this is very important. But all the services on this slide are, receive very high important scores, higher than ninety-five percent. Even the services kind of falling in that bottom nine are rated important by a large majority of residents. For example, recreation facilities and program, ninety-six percent, social supports, ninety-five percent. I won't go through all of these, but ones that are rated a little bit lower would be community events at eighty-seven percent, free local transit, eighty-six percent, animal control and bylaws, services eighty-six percent, and then the two at the bottom there would be public art programs, sixty-five percent, and pedestrian-only Main Street at sixty-four percent. This year's results are all in line with what we've seen in two thousand and twenty-three, and everything tends to be consistent with what we've seen in the norm. One area that's rated a little bit higher in Canmore is traffic management. So ninety-seven percent of Canmore residents say traffic manages, is important. The norm for that is ninety-one percent. So either way, it's a service that's important to a lot of residents, but just a little bit higher in Canmore than we typically see. Then when we look at satisfaction with all of these eighteen services and programs, again, you'll see that residents are generally satisfied with the specific services and programs that the town provides. We do see a little bit more variation here, though. So the highest satisfaction ratings are seen for fire and rescue services, ninety-five percent. Recycling, garbage and compost collection, ninety-five percent. Police services, ninety-two percent. Parks, trails, and other green space, ninety-two percent. Community events, ninety-two percent, and free local transit, ninety percent. So those are all rated satisfactory by at least nine and ten residents. Strong satisfaction scores also for recreation facilities and programs, public art program, and emergency preparedness at eighty-nine percent, eighty-four percent, and eighty-four percent. A couple shifts from two thousand and twenty-three worth noting. So satisfaction with fire and rescue services has actually gone up a little bit, whereas satisfaction with emergency preparedness has slipped slightly. Looking at the bottom-nine services, again, the majority of residents are satisfied in, in most of these areas. But we do, this is where we're seeing a little bit more variation. So kind of at the, the bottom three services here is where I'll focus the attention. So three services that are rated less satisfactory would be vital homes, which is fifty-two percent of residents satisfied. Traffic management, fifty-one percent, and land use and community planning, less than half. Forty-eight percent of residents say they're satisfied in this regard. Again, some shifts compared to two thousand and twenty-three. I think the most significant one would be satisfaction with street cleaning, including snow and ice removal. This year we have eighty-three percent of residents saying they're satisfied. That is up from fifty-seven percent in two thousand and twenty-three. So this has seen a very large increase in satisfaction. It did drop between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-three, more than recovered right now. And then we're also seeing another increase in satisfaction as traffic management. So even though this is one of the lower-rated services, satisfaction is up from two thousand and twenty-three. It's been steadily trending up the past three, three surveys. So in two thousand and twenty-one, it was thirty-nine percent, two thousand and twenty-three, forty-two percent, now it's fifty-one percent. So it does suggest there's making some progress in these areas. And I did indicate transportation is one area we're seeing. Fewer residents identify as an important local issue compared to past surveys, and I think this is where we're seeing some of that, is that satisfaction with street cleaning and traffic management, we're seeing increases in that this year. Conversely, services that have decreased are water and wastewater and land use and community planning. So both of those have gone down compared to two thousand and twenty-three. Compared to the norm, services that are rated higher in Canmore would be recycling, garbage and compost collection, police services, and street cleaning. But there are a couple services that are also rated lower in Canmore, so those would be water and wastewater services. The norm for that is ninety-four percent, we're seeing eighty-three percent here. And land use and community planning, the norm is sixty-six percent compared to the forty-eight percent that we're seeing here. We also did what we call an importance versus satisfaction grid, and those who are familiar with past surveys will likely be familiar with this, but I'll just give a quick overview of kind of what we've done here. So it's essentially a plot of total importance versus total satisfaction to give a sense of the town's strengths and areas for opportunity for improvement. It's a relative type of analysis, so there's always gonna be strengths, and there's always gonna be opportunities to improve. And divided into, services are divided into one of these four quadrants based on the average importance and the average satisfaction rating. So in the upper-right quadrant are what we call the primary strengths, and these are services that are rated both high in importance and satisfaction. And you can see that the town has a number of primary strengths. They would be recycling, garbage and compost collection, fire and rescue services, police services, parks, trails, and other green space, emergency preparedness, recreation facilities and programs, and water, wastewater, as well as street cleaning. Secondary strengths are services that are also rated high in satisfaction, but slightly lower in importance. So these would be community events, free local transit, and public art. And then on the left-hand side are those services that we've identified as opportunities. So these ones are rated relatively lower in satisfaction. And the upper-left are what, are those key areas for improvement. So these are services that are rated relatively high in importance, but lower in satisfaction. There's four services to focus on here. Social supports, maintenance and cleaning and upgrading streets and sidewalks, traffic management, and land use and community planning. And in the bottom-left are the secondary opportunities rated lower in both importance and satisfaction would be animal control and bylaws, pedestrian-only Main Street, and vital homes. Moving on to potential planning, we'll look at value for taxes. Overall perceptions are positive and stable, so seventy-four percent of residents rate, say they receive good value for taxes, including twenty percent very good value, fifty-four percent fairly good value, twenty-six percent rate the value for taxes poorly. This year's results are consistent with what we saw in two thousand and twenty-three, lower than two thousand and twenty-one, but comparable to the last survey, and also on par with the norm. The norm for this is seventy-four percent total good value as well. Followed it up with an open-ended question around asking residents for suggestions that they would like the town to spend more on, to areas they'd like the town to spend more on to see an improvement in service. Number-one suggestion is housing, mentioned by twenty-six percent of residents. That does echo what we've seen elsewhere in the survey, where we see housing is the most important issue facing the community. I recognize that's not fully municipal responsibility and does require participation from other levels of government, but just the fact that residents identify it as an area to spend more on really does highlight the significance to the community. Parks and Recreation sits in second at nineteen percent. And then there's a variety of other mentions as well, so public transit and bus service, nine percent, traffic congestion, seven percent, road maintenance, six percent. So there are still some transportation areas there that residents would like to see addressed. We did see general, similarly, generally similar themes in two thousand and twenty-three around housing and parks and recreation. One difference this year is there's been a, a large drop in mentions around snow removal, so that sat in third in, in two thousand and twenty-three at nineteen percent. Only four percent of residents mentioned it this year, and that is, that mirrors those results we saw when we looked at satisfaction with services, and we saw that big jump in increase in satisfaction with this service this year. And then the services that are seeing a slight uptick in mentions this year would be emergency preparedness and water treatment. And again, those were services that we saw those slips in satisfaction, so I think that's what we're seeing reflected here in this question. Section on communications, engagement, and customer support. Sorry. Overall, seventy-two percent of residents rate the town's communications as good, twenty-eight percent rate these poorly. Those results are statistically consistent with two thousand and twenty-three, but where we're seeing a more of an uptick in some of the percent. but where we're seeing more of an uptick in the percentage rating, these is very poor, so that's nine percent. And I think if you look at these results overall, I mean seventy two percent good this year is down slightly from that seventy six percent in two thousand and twenty three. The percentage saying that poor is also ticked up. So just taken as a whole, I think there has been maybe an uptick in a slight softening of this measure. Maybe we're doing a little bit exploration, but this year's results are still on par with the norm at seventy one percent. We asked an open ended question around information needs. The number one question, the number one request for information from the town was related to community planning, land use and new development. So twenty seven percent of residents indicated this was something they would be interested in receiving more information on. That parallels with those, we know housing and growth and development is a topical issue. So no surprise that want to see more information about that. Other requests would be emergency services and community and special events. And then we have two in ten residents saying none, nothing, they don't know, indicating they're really getting all the information they need. There's nothing immediate that comes to mind. Terms of preferred communication methods to receive information from the town. It's email thirty seven percent, newspaper thirty three percent, social media twenty nine percent. Those are the top three preferred methods, but also the town website and mail also play a role. Very similar to what we saw in two thousand and twenty three, the norm is also email tops the list of the norm at forty three percent. So it's not unusual to see that preference for electronic communications. Here in Canmore, we're seeing a bit more emphasis on mail versus, sorry, the newspaper versus mail. So elsewhere, we get the mail sitting in second, but that's fifth here. And newspaper tends to sit lower on the list. Couple questions related to the town's website. Eight in ten residents say they have visited the website in the past twelve months. This is consistent with what we've seen in the past, but it's notably higher than the norm. The norm for this is only fifty nine percent. So for whatever reason, Canmore residents are more likely to go onto the town's website and have visited in the past twelve months. Among those who have visited the website, the majority of residents, eighty seven percent, find it useful. This is consistent with past surveys and also on par with the norm. Next up, we'll look at attitudes towards engagement opportunities. And I think there's some interesting findings here. So we have eighty six percent of residents saying they would like to provide input to the town for the purpose of influencing decision making about town projects and services. So there's clearly an appetite for this, it's consistent with what we've seen in the past. Residents really do have this desire to be consulted and engaged. But when we look at perceptions of the town's performance and the town's efforts in these areas, it's less positive. So this year we have fifty four percent of residents agreeing that they have enough opportunity to provide input into decision making about town projects and services. That is down from sixty two percent in two thousand and twenty three. So whether there's less opportunities or a perception of less opportunities, or even that residents are more keen to be consulted and engaged, so they have greater expectations in this area, or a combination of all those things, this year's results are less positive than we've seen in the past. And we also have less than half of residents saying the town uses input from residents in decision making. So forty nine percent of residents agree with this. As well as the town's decision making about projects and services reflects the voice of the majority of residents. Forty three percent of residents agree with that. Both of those metrics are down slightly from two thousand and twenty three. Not a significant shift, but if you look at how that compares to two thousand and twenty one, you can see it's been gradually trending down over the past few years for those ones as well. I don't have norms for all of those, but the ones that we do, perceptions are generally lower in Canmore, particularly for how the town uses input in decision making. The norm for that is sixty percent compared to the forty nine percent that we're seeing in Canmore this year. Attitudes towards customer service delivery and transparency continue to be positive. Staffs courteous, helpfulness and knowledge stands out as a highlight with eighty seven percent of residents agreeing that's the case. Seventy three percent of residents agree the quality of service from the town is consistently high. Seventy percent agree town staff are easy to get a hold of when they need them. Sixty eight percent agree the town practices open and accessible government. And sixty four percent agree the town responds quickly to requests and concerns. Overall, similar to what we saw in two thousand and twenty three, with the exception of the town practices open and accessible government, this one has gone down from seventy five percent to sixty eight percent. And I think that's likely tied to those perceptions of the town's engagement opportunities. If residents feel they have fewer opportunities to be involved, they might be also tied into those perceptions. Well, maybe the town is less open than it once was. Overall, some generally similar to what we're seeing elsewhere in terms of the norm. Ones that are a little bit lower in Canmore would be easy to get a hold of. The norm for this is seventy five percent and responds quickly, the norm for that is sixty, sixty nine percent. So just a slight difference there. Moving on to environmental sustainability. Perceptions of how the town is managing human and wildlife interaction are positive. Seventy six percent of residents say the town is doing a good job in this regard. Twenty nine percent very good, forty seven percent somewhat good. Only twenty three percent of residents rate this poorly. And then when we're looking at satisfaction with programs and services aimed at reducing community impact on climate change, seventy three percent of residents say they're satisfied, twenty four percent of residents say they're not satisfied. There has been a slight softening in this metric this year. So this year we have eighteen percent of residents saying very satisfied compared to twenty five percent in two thousand and twenty three. So that's, that slipped slightly. It could possibly be tied to when we go back to the very start of the presentation, when we looked at important issues and we did see that growing emphasis on the environment. If residents have increased expectations here, perhaps they'd like to see the town do a little bit more in that regard. And that might be, might be tying into why this one has softened just a little bit compared to two thousand and twenty three. But overall, the results are still comparable to what we've seen in the past. Question around community safety. Public safety didn't really come up at all when we looked at top of mind issues. It sometimes does in other communities, but in Canmore, we didn't see it come up on a top of mind basis. And when we specifically ask about crime and public safety, you can see overwhelmingly residents do feel safe living in Canmore. Ninety eight percent of residents describe Canmore safe, including two thirds, sixty six percent saying very safe. Consistent with what we've seen in the past, and this is higher than the norm. The norm here is eighty nine percent total safe. So we're seeing more residents in Canmore saying they feel safe in their community than we typically see. Followed it up with an open ended question around what residents feel are the biggest crime and personal safety issues. Consistent with past surveys, it's really theft, burglary forty five percent. Everything else is mentioned much less often, substance abuse six percent, personal safety five percent. But by and large, it's theft and burglary. Question around growth and development. This is one area where we do see some less positive views and also some downward trends. So this year we have just over half, fifty four percent of residents agreeing it's possible for the town to grow while maintaining the quality of life we have come to enjoy in this town. A total of forty six percent of residents disagree with this statement. And if we look at the intensity of opinion, you get equally strong and opposing views among those who strongly agree and those who strongly disagree. So to overall suggests this is an issue that residents are divided on. There's kind of those who feel on both sides of the issues. And because you're seeing those intense views on both sides, probably hearing from both sides of the community on this issue. And then when we look at attitudes in other areas, these are also less positive and have declined. So we have less than half of residents agreeing the town keeps citizens informed about how it plans to deal with growth. That's forty nine percent compared to sixty percent in two thousand and twenty three. Thirty eight percent of residents agree the town is managing growth and development in the Three Sisters area in a responsible manner, down from forty five percent in two thousand and twenty three. And thirty eight percent agree the town does a good job of managing the level of development and growth in the town, down from forty five percent in two thousand and twenty three. Question around diversity and inclusion. These all remain strong unchanged from two thousand and twenty three. So ninety one percent of residents agree they feel a sense of belonging in their neighborhood. Ninety percent agree people in Canmore are friendly and inclusive of all people. Eighty eight percent agree people in Canmore feel accepted regardless of their background, identity or lifestyle. And fifty four percent agree the town needs to address racism and discrimination. All results are consistent with what we've seen in past surveys. So I know that's a lot of, a lot of information on a lot of different topics. So I just wanted to wrap up with what I saw as a few key takeaways. First and foremost, residents continue to demonstrate mostly positive views of the community and the town. And we're see this in a number of different areas, whether we're looking at quality of life, satisfaction with government, satisfaction with services, value for taxes, diversity and inclusion. All these measures are stable and strong, suggest really do, results are positive. And I think it's important to keep that favorable context in mind as we go through the rest of the results. Well, overall perceptions of quality of life are favorable. Many, however, do feel it has declined in the past three years, primarily due to concerns around growth and development, the cost of living and housing. And we see these issues reflected elsewhere in the survey as well. So for example, when we're looking at important local issues, it's social issues, specifically housing, that continue to be the top concern for the community and growth and development places second. When we look at satisfaction with specific services, residents are generally satisfied with the services and programs that the town provides. Sorry, excuse me there. The three lowest scoring would be vital homes, traffic management and land use and community planning. So there are some opportunities to do some improvements in those areas. And we're also seeing some shifts in satisfaction as compared to two thousand and twenty three, both positive and negative. So services that have increased in satisfaction would be street cleaning, traffic management and fire and rescue. But services that have decreased in satisfaction would be land use and community planning, water and wastewater and emergency preparedness. We know growth and development is an important issue for residents. It's also the number one reason why some residents feel the quality of life has worsened. And when we look at attitudes towards a town approach of growth and development, we do see some, this is one area where perceptions are less positive and have declined since the last survey, particularly around keeping residents informed, managing growth and development in the Three Sisters area and managing the level of growth and development in the town. And then lastly, the survey shows that residents, there is this appetite to be consulted, to be engaged, to offer their input on important community issues. But fewer think they have enough opportunities to provide this input and also not necessarily feel the town is listening to or using the input that it receives. So there is room for improvement in this area of public engagement. And I think that's tied to where we're seeing perceptions of the town's openness and accessibility have slipped this year as well. Probably all tied into that public engagement piece. So those were six key takeaways that I saw from the survey. There's lots of interesting, different finding, but just wanted to highlight a few key findings for you. And that wraps up the presentation, but more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your work in this regard and for presenting the survey to us. I always look forward to when the survey comes out because it's very useful information. Being statistically valid, it gives, in my opinion, voice to the silent majority. And we get a real sense of what people are thinking, which helps us, you know, weight concerns when they come into, into us as well. Of course, there's always room for improvement and it also identifies places that we can get better or that we should be paying attention to more. And so it's a very, very useful document. I appreciate, appreciate that we do this every couple of years. Looking to members of the committee, are there any questions? I am not seeing any, so thank you very much for your, for your time once again. And I hope you have a good rest of the day.
Thank you, you too.
All right, so we will now move on to item D two, Rundle Four Bay Water Supply Update Verbal Report. Ms. Wood and Mr. Como, welcome to Committee of the Whole. So I see that we're, we're just trying to get, trying to get it, projecting as well there. Okay. Thanks for your patience with that.
Thank you.
Anytime you're ready, proceed.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Shannon Woods, I'm the Water Resource Engineer. And I'm here to tell you today about some work that is going to be happening around the Rundle Four Bay and what the town is doing in preparation for this. Also how this will impact the, the community in general. Next slide. Perfect, so roadmap for today, or sorry, go back to the second slide. Okay, first going to review what is happening. Why does this matter? How, how we are preparing and also how it will impact residents. Here today with me, I have a number of people with me who have been involved in, in planning for this. So I've got Alec from Epcor, Jamie from SEMA Plus, our engineering consultant, and then also Hamrit from TransAlta. And if at any time you guys have questions during the presentation, feel free to stop me. But also they're my technical backup, should I not be able to answer anything in particular. Next slide. All right, so what is happening? So TransAlta is conducting some maintenance on the canal leading to the Rundle Four Bay. This work will be done between July twenty eighth and September twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. And during this time, the four bay will not be either emptied via the canal, or sorry, filled via the canal or emptied by the power plant. So we're, we're going to have a bit of a, a semi closed system. Next slide. So why does this matter? So normally the Rundle Four Bay supplies sixty percent of the town's drinking water. And with the canal closed, the four bay is going to become a finite water source. It's going to be a semi closed system, which I'll explain a little bit in a second here. And so careful planning is required in order to ensure that we have sufficient quantity and quality of water during this time period. Just to orient everybody in space, the four bay has water treatment plant number two next to it. And then water treatment plant number one is over by elevation place with two different water sources. So next slide. So in an open system, which is how the four bay normally operates, we have these two main bulk flows. And this is the spray canal coming in and then power generation going out. If you just want to click to the next button, we also have a couple of smaller influence and effluence here. We have precipitation, we have evaporation, the town's consumption and also seepage into the ground. So on the next slide, this is our semi closed system. So we have some inflows and outflows, but we don't have those bulk flows going on. And just to give everybody a little bit of a reference point, the town's annual license is the same as one day, it's less than one day of power generation. So there's usually a lot of water flowing through there with the town with a very small straw coming off of it. So that, those bulk flows will not be there. Next slide. Next slide. So how are we preparing? We've been coordinating with TransAlta for the last several months, we've done a detailed risk evaluation and mitigation with Epcor and SEMA Plus, and then we've done a lot of contingency planning for a bunch of scenarios that could happen, we've been quite creative in thinking of all the things that might come up. Next slide. So what are we doing to mitigate risk? So the first step in risk mitigation is first analysis, so we need to identify our risks and then evaluate them, look at causes, probabilities, impacts, and the resulting severity. So I'm sure most of you have seen a risk matrix in which we have, on this particular one, the probability on the Y-axis and the impact on the X-axis. So we want to be operating more towards the bottom right-hand corner of this chart as opposed to the top left. Next, once we've done an evaluation, then we can look at implementing mitigations and also planning for contingencies. Next slide. So I just wanna go over briefly, so we have an original risk which is somewhere in the left-hand side, top left-hand side of our plot. Mitigations are something that are implemented in advance, and they reduce the probability of an event occurring. So then you have a mitigated risk which has shifted down on that Y-axis, then contingencies are what you do should that event be, you either think that it will occur or it does occur, so that's the plan that you have in your back pocket to act on later, and it typically reduces the impact, and so this is your contingency risk, so moving down into that bottom right-hand corner. Next slide. So I have a couple of examples, I want to give you an idea of what we were thinking about and talking about while we were doing this risk evaluation, so I'm gonna walk you guys through three examples, and not necessarily in full technical detail, but some of the considerations, mitigations, and contingencies and thought that went into it. So our first one is that we could lose water supply to water treatment plant number two, and this would be caused by the level of the Four Bay dropping, so to mitigate, and this would result in a significant portion of the town being without water. So to mitigate this risk, right away, we're going to shift demand over to water treatment plant number one, so it normally supplies that 40%, we're going to push it a lot harder, we're gonna ramp it up to shift as much production over there, keep our finite water supply available through that 60 days with TransAlta's outage. So that's our first one. We're also gonna be doing daily monitoring of the Four Bay level to make sure that it's trending as we expect it to with our consumption. And then, right off the bat, we're also going to be implementing water restrictions to curtail what the town typically uses in order to, A, not stress water treatment plant number one as much, and also decrease the draw on water treatment plant number two, and we're gonna, I'm gonna go over that in a little bit more detail, we're gonna start at a low level of water restriction. So the contingencies, should the water level of the Four Bay not be trending as we expect it to with, you know, our calculations and projections, we can increase water restrictions. We can also look at, in an emergency situation, look at overland pumping or an emergency diversion license. Next slide. So, example number two, our risk of high turbidity in the distribution system, and turbidity is like a cloudiness, so as we shift production from water treatment plant two over to water treatment plant one, we're potentially, we are going to have flow reversals in our distribution system, so a water main that might be flowing north to south will now be flowing south to north. And so what we've done with SEMA is we've modeled these shifts, oh, sorry, and when you reverse the flow, any sediment that has built up within the water main has the potential to be kicked up just from going in the opposite direction, so that's the turbidity. So we've modeled it, we flushed, we identified where all those flow reversals would be, and then we've completed some flushing in May, which you may remember, we were mostly in the downtown area, which is where predominantly most of the flow reversals will occur. And then another factor here, we're going to be adjusting, we're gonna be making our system adjustments, so doing those flow reversals, closing valves, readjusting everything, shifting over to water treatment plant number one several weeks in advance, we don't wanna be doing this at the 11th hour, so we're actually gonna be starting this next week. Contingencies, should we actually have any turbidity in the water mains, Epcor is, has a standard operating procedure for flushing, and they're ready and able to do that right away, and this just gets that extra sediment out of the lines. Next slide. All right, example number three, contamination of our source water in the Four Bay, so we are gonna be having stagnant water as we mentioned before, so in order to mitigate this risk, we're going to be sampling our raw water quality, we have a detailed plan that we're going to be implementing before, during, and after this work, to make sure that we can still maintain a safe drinking water supply to our residents, and then we're gonna be in very, very tight communication with TransAlta during the re-flooding of the canal, and this is kind of the highest probability that we will see turbidity because you're gonna have all that construction sediment that has come into the system during their work. And so we'll be working closely with them to either say like, yes, we're good, or no, slow down, and so that shifts our risk down into kind of the orange area. And then contingencies, what else can we do should we have contamination? We can adjust our water treatment plant set points, and should there be a short duration of a turbidity plume in the Four Bay, we can potentially shut down the plant for several hours, but not on the order of magnitude of days, so this buys us some time, but not a lot. Next slide. So example number three actually has a very, not just the chance of TransAlta's construction work causing some of this, but our friends over at the Nordic Center also are gonna be doing some in-water work at the same time, so they have their snow-making raw water inlet, and they're going to be doing an upgrade there, and so we've been coordinating with them, we've communicated the risks to the town and our water supply, and then we've also requested that they use silt screens around this project area, which will contain any kind of silt that has kicked up during their work and keep it on the opposite side of the Four Bay, so they're up at the top star on the map, and we're down at the bottom right star on the map. Next slide. So we have a very long laundry list of mitigations and contingencies that we have been planning and implementing throughout the last several months, and this is just a sampling to give you an idea of what else we've been doing. So we are doing preemptive maintenance and also making sure that we have critical spares at our water treatment plants, we've increased our storage water capacity by doing a reservoir repair, we've updated operating procedures, increased coordination with TransAlta, engaged with Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, we've notified key contractors in advance should we have an emergency, any emergency work that needs to be completed, they can mobilize rapidly, and then we've also informed key stakeholders who may be impacted, such as the Fire Department. So water restrictions, this is what most residents will be wondering about right away. So we'll be implementing stage one restrictions on July 14th, so this is two weeks ahead of the TransAlta kind of initiation of their work, but we'll already be pushing water treatment plant number one closer to its threshold, so we don't want to run at that kind of peak production for too long. We also want to make sure that residents are aware and compliant before game time, so that's why it's implemented on July 14th instead of July 28th. Stage one is relatively lax, these are mostly good water practices, watering between, only using sprinklers once a week for two hours, hand watering, many, many, many things are allowed here, with the exception of filling your fountains or ponds, which I think either people now have a month to do that, or just choose not to, so this is very lax and soft. What we will be doing as we monitor our levels of the Four Bay, we will adjust as required, we don't intend to right now, we think we have enough water supply, but there's some unknowns that this has never happened before, and so, for example, we don't know what the seepage rate is into the soil, we don't know that that confined body is not gonna be kind of exfiltrating elsewhere. Next slide. So a timeline, just to give everybody kind of re-centered on what this all looks like, so next week, we're gonna be making those operational changes, shifting towards pump house number one, our water treatment plant one, on July 14th, the phase one water restrictions, followed by game time of July 28th for TransAlta's start of work, which lasts 60 days and ends September 26th. The following Monday, we'll be reversing our operational changes, and then the following week, once the system has re-equilbrated, planning to lift those water restrictions. Next slide. Okay, so key takeaways, this is uncharted territory, we've never been here before, and it is complex, but we're going into this well-informed, we are planning for the worst, but hoping for the best, we're being pretty conservative, you have a lot of risk averse people in front of you, behind me, and then also behind us, who have been part of this, our whole operations team, Epcor in general, they are very risk averse, and so we're going into this planning for the worst, and we have contingencies in place, we're ready to adapt as needed, should we need to, with some unknown variable outcomes. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much for this very full presentation on an issue that obviously will be of great interest to the community, and I really appreciate the, going through the examples, showing that level of thought process, and I have to admit, when I first heard the issue, it was like, what? Isn't that a big problem? But I am feeling very confident that the measure is taken is that, you know, that the chance of it being a big problem is greatly mitigated, and there's an excellent chance that there'll be no problem at all. So we'll have to see that, how it goes, and I appreciate that effort and work. So there are a couple of questions here, Counsel for Bear.
Thank you, Yourship, and thank you for your presentation. In the different risk scenarios, how would each affect our ability to respond to a large-scale fire event?
So as part of our modeling, we looked at fire flows that are immediately available. So at each fire hydrant, we're currently able to deliver a certain amount of flow as per like the fire code, best practices, all that sort of stuff, commercial versus residential. So when we make these operational changes, that will decrease the immediately available flow at those hydrants. Our commitment with the Fire Department is that should there be a large structure fire, Epcor, even at, you know, midnight, 3:00 AM, will be able to have, we're closing several valves around town to make, to ship that production, they'll be able to respond and have those valves open within an hour, even at 3:00 AM, probably sooner, and so we have fire flow available and can increase it in a relatively short time, and that we would just revert after the structure fire, we would just revert back to our closed valves once everything had, the fire was put out.
And then, are we doing any strategies as a municipality to reduce our consumption as a corporation during this time as well?
So many of these water restrictions also apply to the town, mostly to our Parks Department, and potentially to our fleet, in that it includes car washing at elevated stages, and so, yes, the irrigation requirements will apply to them as well, with the exception of safe turf practices and concussion and all that, so yes, that will apply to the town as well.
Counsel Ma.
Hey, Yourship, thanks for your presentation. So the three examples you gave, what was kind of in your mind the three most likely ones, or the three most serious ones, or just three off the top of your guys, it's like, to bring for presentation?
I think they're the ones that are most relatable.
Okay.
And also relatively severe.
Yeah.
That, you know, if we lose water level in the Four Bay, we can't supply water, and so that is, A, very relatable and very severe consequences, so.
Perfect, and could you tell me a bit more about the overland pumping as a contingency? Like, where are we overland pumping from, and how quick to set that up?
Yeah, so, right now, water treatment plant two is supplied actually by siphon, and so if we have an air gap there, so our intake is submerged underneath the water, and then it flows slightly downhill to our water treatment plant, and this is a passive exercise by siphon, so if we lose that siphon, if we have an air gap in there, even though there's still water in the Four Bay, it won't be siphoning anymore, so there's potential to pump it across the highway.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. And if, in the event of very, very, very extreme situation, we can look at a temporary diversion license from the boat, but that is very extreme and very unlikely.
Okay, great, and could you repeat that one stat about the consumption for power and how that flow for one day is?
Yeah, so these statistics are from, they're not publicly available, but we had some data from 2011, and I just, I was looking at flow where our annual consumption, the town's, sorry, annual license, which our consumption is lower than our license, so our annual license is the same, is lower, sorry, than one day of power generation throughput through the Rundle Four Bay.
Wow, that is amazing.
Yeah. The other thing to note is that usually, the full volume of the Four Bay is the same as one day's throughput, so back in 2011, don't know what the stats are now, but, so this is a very flushed-out, clean system, so hence the worries about stagnant water.
Great, thank you so much.
Counsel Graham.
Thank you. What about, you talked about contamination of the Four Bay, what about contamination of groundwater down in front of pump house one?
Yes, so, and this is something, a risk that is present at all times.
Totally.
So then as well, so well one was contaminated during construction of elevation place, and so we have two wells, and so we can, we can operate just with one well at a time, should we, and they're also at different levels, right, so a contaminant may be at the shallower well, which is still quite deep, or it may be at the lower well, right, so we can typically operate just based off of one well, and just off of one well's license, and if we're not able to operate within that license, we go to Alberta Environment, we say, hey, we need a temporary diversion license for this particular well, which is uncontaminated, it's unlikely to contaminate both at the same time, and they, we expect that they would say, yes, we relieve, we take away this condition of your maximum license off of this one well for the duration until, say, October 1st, something like that.
Ms. Smithers, did you wanna add something?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted to remind Council that last year, I believe towards the end of the year, we did bring forward that wellhead protection study, just recognizing that both of those water treatment plants rely on different sources for water, so the groundwater, we looked at how to protect or avoid contamination of pump house one through our stormwater management systems, our regular monitoring, and some other practices, so I can recirculate that study to Council members if that would be helpful.
It was that study that cued this question for me, so thank you. And then, I was up on the spray this weekend and noticed that the spray was incredibly low, and I'm assuming this, extra low, I'm assuming this might be one of those reasons.
So I can speak a little bit to the technical side of what we have learned from TransAlta at a relatively high level, and so their timeline is partially dictated by an unknown amount of runoff that is going to come into the spray. by an unknown amount of runoff that is going to come into the spray. And their construction window will end once the spray is at a certain level. So that is part of how the 60 days was come up with. And so, in order to buy more time, I do believe that is an intentional to drop that level.
Makes sense. It was scary low when I drove by.
I'm getting the nod from TransAlta.
I'm assuming, thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Forbear.
Thank you. I have three more questions. Will recreational users still be allowed on the Forbay?
We have a communications plan with the town and TransAlta to encourage people not to. There are some interesting, our friends in Calgary and also, so there's a kind of try task force over on the Bear's Paw Reservoir. And they've been trying to do something similar and running into some interesting legal and moral dilemmas about access to water. So we're going to encourage people not to. And should we notice that contamination is spiking, we have some contingencies to limit it.
Dr. Carl.
I'll just add there, I think, and somebody in the crowd, correct me if I'm wrong, technically, they're not allowed now.
It's trespassing.
So it is, there's big concrete barriers and signs. It's not town land. For several years, there's been an effort to make it clear to people that they are using it at their own risk and that it is not allowed. So it's not, we're changing allowance. We're maybe taking different measures because of the implications, but it's not allowed, it hasn't been allowed ever.
Maybe then a better question would be, would this be an opportunity to begin upping that message that it's not allowed?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
And then I did have a question related to the communications rollout and the information, just in terms of like, the fact that this is one of those situations where you kind of have to pay attention as a resident, and if something happens, you respond. And then the other aspect is enforcement. So if we go into restrictions and people in these restriction scenarios start watching everyone around them and what they're doing, and they want to, they feel a responsibility to inform us when people aren't following our restrictions, how does that work?
Gotcha. So the first one about communications rollout. There is a detailed communications plan about two things. One is water restrictions in general, which we had developed last year during the kind of drought planning for the larger Alberta community. So we'll be using that communications rollout, which will be occurring, I believe, will start next week or possibly later this week. And the second is about the TransAlta work in general. And so, we're partnering with TransAlta to communicate with them. For example, a full-page ad in the Rocky Mountain Outlook, which will address both the TransAlta work and then how this impacts Canmore. So collaboratively with both communications teams. Is that good on the communications front? Okay. And there's buoyant alert and all that sort of stuff if we go up to, I think, very high water restrictions, just like the fire bans. And then, the second question was, sorry, can you remind me?
Enforcement, in terms like if we're in restrictions and people want to report something they don't think is okay?
Yeah, so I've been in touch with bylaw and told them about, yes, we are planning on implementing these restrictions essentially four weeks from now. And what that looks like, what is included. I think the benefit of doing the two weeks in advance is we can get, we can do an education-first approach and then look at, okay, if we have second or third non-compliances, then yes, there, we do have in our bylaw the ability to enforce monetarily.
Thank you, Counsel Mara.
Thank you for your fulsome report. And it obviously has been really well thought out through all different levels. I'm just doing sort of a carry-on from Counsel Forbear's question about fire flow. So there'll still be fire flow, we just won't be at the maximum level, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and if there is, only if it's a major event, we would have to start? Because an hour is a lot of time for a house fire.
And that is like a 3:00 a.m., a train is rolling through town, they have to drive around to get to another valve. And so, it should be a lot faster than that. We'll also be identifying the valves for the fire department. Should anything come up, that they will also, they'll know where those are. It will be EPCOR that is opening them. But should anything happen where EPCOR cannot open those valves, fire will know where they are and will also tell them how to open them.
Thank you. And just also, when we're talking about communication, if we were to move into, say, Stage Three, we could also do that through our town, like, our messaging system, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And our comms team is great. They've looked at kind of how to get out information for each stage and based on kind of criticality and, yes.
Thank you for your well-thought-out plan.
Thank you.
Counselor Graham.
Thank you. I know that there's a few places that are on their own well system. How, and I know people can...
Good question, like golf courses.
Like the golf courses have their own wells.
Our restrictions do not apply to anybody on their own water system. So this applies to golf courses, anybody who's pumping from a private well or from a pond, irrigation pond, anything like that. Water restrictions do not apply to them. They will, however, apply to our friends down the road at Deadman's Flats as we supply water to them.
So on a comms basis, we'll be helping the public understand the difference between private golf courses and...
Yes, yeah. I believe Spring Creek as well has their own irrigation.
I believe you're right. You would know.
Dr. Cottle?
I just have a question too, if that's okay?
Sure.
I think it's implied, but I, for my own understanding, I just want to clarify, the, how will the Forbay look different as people drive by and, like, I'm assuming the water level will be lower than usual?
It will gradually drop through the summer. So that is, I believe, part of our joint comms will say, hey, there's increased risk. There's going to be a lot more of the, they call it riprap, those huge boulders. As the summer progresses, those 60 days continue, that more of those will be exposed. And so, yes, the water level will slowly drop. They're going to try to fill it up as much as safely possible before July 28th. So we'll start high and slowly drop. And we are being quite conservative in our estimates as to how much we'll actually consume. And so, hopefully, it doesn't drop as much as we expect.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I really appreciate the conservative, thoughtful approach. I think partly I raise it, because that's been my assumption. And I think if, depending on what kind of summer we get and the conditions around town and people's anxiety level, you know, they'll correlate one thing with other conditions. So it's just important for people to understand, yeah.
Great. All right, well, I don't see any other questions. So thank you very much for everyone attending today and for all of your collaborative work in order to best handle this repair that's required.
Thank you.
We're going to deal with the new item D3, just very quickly before we go on break. And I'm going to introduce it, but give Counselor McCallum the opportunity to recuse herself and then return at the same time. So this is a, an award nomination with respect to Counselor McCallum. And she's going to recuse herself. So we'll be returning from break at 10 after 4. All right, so on to item D3. Each year, Alberta municipalities collect nominations for a variety of awards. There are four that they typically provide at the fall gathering of municipalities. And one of those categories is an Award of Excellence. And it's for, it could be for elected officials that have served over a certain period of time. Counselor McCallum has been very clear that this is her last term, at the end of which she will have served for 15 years through a variety of difficult issues and has been a, a strong voice in moving forward on issues that are critical to our community, particularly around housing and transit. And of course, within housing, it's also her work on both regional housing. And so, I am going to move that to the Committee of Hold Direct Administration to nominate Joanna McCallum for the Alberta Municipality's Award of Excellence. And so, that is so moved. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? I should add that I'm bringing it today because nominations close on June 27th. And so, just as a matter of timing, and we need to have a motion of those of us sitting on this dais or at this dais. And so, if there's no comments, then I'll call the question. All those in favor, carried unanimously. Thank you. And now we'll take a break and return at 10 after 4.
I'll look to, okay, we are back from our break. And so now we're going to move on to what is now item D four, Moustache Lands feasibility study. Ms. Smithers, you want to introduce what's to follow?
I sure do.
I just lost my panel.
Sally Jinkstead.
Okay.
Okay, so we did have some paper copies of the presentation that we've handed out for council, and we'll just work off of those if that works for you. Yeah.
I can't do anything here. My panel's down.
Should we take a break for another five minutes then?
Okay. All right, so, so yes.
Okay.
Please proceed.
I will. Thank you very much. And I'm here today to introduce the project team that has been working with the town on our Moustache Lands project. As you'll recall, the province issued a reservation agreement for that Moustache Lands parcel a couple of years ago now for the development of affordable housing. The town had been working with G three, which is a consortium of companies that they will introduce themselves as they speak later on to advance that work. Part of that work was achieving a grant from Federation of Canadian Municipalities to undertake a feasibility study. And we've recently completed that feasibility study. So the purpose of today's meeting is to share the results of that study with council, give you an opportunity to ask questions of us. We will be coming back on July eighth with a request for decision where we will be looking to council to make some decisions on next steps for the Moustache Lands, because it is a big project with a fair amount of complexity. We wanted to bring it first to this committee, the whole meeting, to give you an opportunity to ask questions and give you some time to just consume the information that we'll be providing you with. So with that, I will introduce Bronte MacArthur. She is with Ground Cube Design, and she will kick off today's presentation and then introduce the rest of her team members as they are ready to speak. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Whitney, for the introduction. Good afternoon, council. I am Bronte MacArthur with Ground Cube, landscape architect and planner. We're very excited here today to share the results of the feasibility study that we've been working on for the past few months. Perfect. So the, the purpose of the feasibility study is to design an initial development concept to be tested for feasibility. So key considerations include potential housing provider, number and types of affordable housing units, looking at who, sorry, the Canmore population to be supported through housing and/or other programs, commercial, retail, and social enterprise options, funding opportunities, in alignment with the Palisade Trail ASP. So the feasibility study, we analyze the project scale and program to provide recommendations through this feasibility. And then we will be back in beginning of July to ask council to provide direction on how to move forward with this site. So the timeline for the feasibility study, we began in spring 2024. We were here meeting with council. We, as Whitney said, submitted a funding application, have had many, many discussions with housing operators, and have been working with the YWCA as a potential lead housing provider through the feasibility stage. We are here today presenting the summary of the feasibility report. We have moved through the land use application, which is very exciting for these lands. And then next steps, Lee will describe in a little bit more detail later on, next steps into development permit, building permits, and then to groundbreaking. So really quickly, we started with the Palisade Trail ASP. Exciting. It's been approved in its full form. So we are looking at site seven, which is called the Moustache Lands. And this is the site we've been looking at for affordable housing in the Palisade Trail area. So we're looking at 250 to 350 units, mixed use up to six stories in heights, 100% non-market affordable units, as well as 2,000 to 4,000 square meters of other uses on the site. And I will hand it over to Kelly to speak to the engagement process we've been working through.
Thank you, Bronte. Mayor Council, good to see you again. I'm just going to touch a little bit on the process that we went through to get from where, when we spoke to you last in January to where we are today. We took an engagement-first approach to getting to the feasibility analysis concept. We worked with a project team, which of course included the Town of Canmore administration, the YWCA team, and the Ground Cube team. And so we worked closely with, with these partnerships throughout the process. One of our first steps was to form an advisory committee. And the intent of forming the advisory committee was to work with different organizations in the community that had potentially a direct impact by the project, or had a very high level of interest in the project. So we worked with those interest groups and identified them before we started the process. We went through three different advisory committee meetings. And as you'll see by the diagram here, it was an iterative feedback loop for each of the steps. So we'd listen first, learn, we'd take that away, and respond with a design response. We built from a higher-level aspirational outlook from each of the interest holders, and then worked our way through the different details as we went through the process. We also had ongoing conversations with other interest holders in the community that we needed to have more detailed conversations with to refine the feasibility as we went through the process. So on this slide, it's just a demonstration of some of the engagement outcomes that we started from. We started again with the aspirational level of conversation. What could we see on the site? What would be some of the successes that, that we could try and achieve for the site? And we worked through those conversations into some of the specific needs of the different potential housing operators, different users of the site, and looking at the community as a whole. And what that, what that does is help us form our design principles for developing the concept, the design concept and the feasibility for the site. So what you see here are, in the center, we have our project design principles, and they do align really well with council strategic plan and strategic priorities. So of course, the livability, environment, relationships are aligned with some of the design principles that we helped create as part with the advisory committee and our project team. And we're going to speak to each of those throughout the presentation today when we get into a little bit more about the feasibility concept of the project. At this point, what I'd like to do is hand it over to my colleague from the YWCA. Rhea McLeod is the co-acting CEO for the YWCH. She's going to share a little bit about the work that the Y does in the Bow Valley.
Thanks, Kelly. Good afternoon, your worship, members of town council, community. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Y today. I'm joined by my team here today, and I think I'll just introduce them quickly. We have Ray Bilado, co-acting CEO, Selena McNamara, our Director of Resource Development and Communications, and Stephen Crotty, our Special Projects Officer. Glad to have them here with me today. At the Y, we are steadfast in our mission to shape a safe, inclusive, and equitable Bow Valley for all. Our roots of providing affordable housing go back over 100 years. And in addition to affordable housing, we provide support and advocacy. And we've evolved over time, and we've grown right alongside our community. Our name sometimes leads folks to believe that we're only serving the community of Banff, but we're proud to support the entire Bow Valley, from Lake Louise all the way to Minnetonka. The opportunity in Canmore is to expand our deeply affordable housing model to support folks to achieve positive long-term outcomes. We know this is possible thanks to our experience in Banff. Currently, our affordable housing is only available to those, pardon me, who meet the need to reside in Banff. This is a really important protection within our national park, but it does leave Canmore residents without access to our affordable housing. We're in a strong position to lend our expertise in the space as the Town of Canmore addresses new possibilities. Recently, and you'll see on the slide, we completed a $15 million net zero build that provides 33 affordable housing units, including five barrier-free units. We're about to embark on a $22 million redevelopment of our Spray Avenue location, focusing on tourism and hospitality education, as well as some much-needed upgrades to our facility. Not only have we developed new builds, but we also are a seasoned operator. So we've operated a social enterprise hotel with 80 beds, and we currently accommodate 160 residents in our deeply affordable housing units, in addition to our shelter and transitional housing programs as well. Our buildings in Banff are part of a really vibrant residential neighborhood, and they're embraced by locals who also enjoy the use of our community spaces. Perhaps you've been to an event in our great room. Since 2015, we've been working tirelessly toward a project in Canmore for Canmore. We've built relationships, we've conducted research, we've collaborated with local housing providers to ensure we are prepared to meet the needs of the growing Canmore community. We're aligned with the area's structure plan, and we support the recommendations that will be made here today. We're ready to act if identified as the lead operator. YWCA Banff is proud to contribute to the Town of Canmore's housing action plan through the Moustache Lands Affordable Housing Feasibility Project. We're really excited for the opportunity to help shape meaningful pathways for people to build their lives here in Canmore. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Mayor and council, Matthew Parks, I'm with Dialogue. I'm an architect and partner. I'm going to talk a little bit about, or continue from what we spoke about last time, what inspires us for this project. And so, you know, from an architectural and design perspective, I think it's important that we recognize the place we're in. It's an amazing place. This is an amazing opportunity. So connecting those things is important. I did talk last time about the mountains, you know, in, in the Bow Valley, those are important things that orientate us, their calendars, their, you know, times of day, that they read differently for us. And when you're around them a lot, you recognize those things. So preserving those view corridors with this project, allowing access to those is really important. We talked before about Olympic legacy and the fact that activity is, is paramount for a lot of people in the Bow Valley and in Canmore as well. We talked about there is a history of mining in Canmore that could lead to interesting material choice and, and massing strategies for the buildings as they get developed. The image on the bottom right, though, I want to talk a bit more about that. That's a pictograph that some might be familiar with. It's in Grotto Canyon, and it's next to a climbing route called Art of the Ancients. It's been there for thousands of years, and so I think it's a pretty neat idea to use that as a departure point. And so, you know, Indigenous voice has been part of this project. Teresa Snow, who is a Stony Nakota representative, has been involved in some of these conversations. I also want to talk about our, our practice as a collective, and how we're, we're changing how we work. And part of that is understanding through, you know, we've worked a lot with Indigenous architects and designers and communities, is a land-based way of knowing, a land-based way of thinking and understanding. And so, when you think about Grotto Canyon, I've been climbing there, in there quite a bit. And when you hike in, there's a crunch of the stones under your feet. When you get to the desired place where you want to climb, like this one next to the route I described, you notice right away that the water is pretty noisy. And so you might go across the other side behind some trees to get respite from that, have some lunch, and realize you're in the shade. And so you jump across to the other side and maybe chase the sun for a bit to warm up. And long story short, climbing is about climbing, but there's a lot of dwell time in between the routes, in between when you belay and climb off the route. You don't have to be a climber to appreciate this. But I guess my point is that dwell time, and, and looking over and seeing this and realizing that people have been dwelling here like, like we do, and appreciate, is an important thing to take through into our design thinking. A bit of lag. So you're, you're looking at a little sketch. It helps me to see it. Thanks. Thanks, Councilor Ma. And so on that drawing, you know, the idea that we, we want to build units, we have a budget, and we recognize that, you know, architectural moves could be simple, materials could be, you know, more industrial than, than fancy. And the image you're looking at slides the roof elements a little bit and focuses on the outdoor spaces that are going to help really generate a draw, a public area, you know, creating shade in summer is important. And so you could have an afternoon sort of patio environment that encourages outdoor use and attraction. You could have a shoulder-season sun trap. So if it's, if it's colder and, and, you know, it could block the wind, just really encouraging the connections between the buildings and the space between the buildings, which is what this project is all about. Sure, we are building 270-odd units, but the space between is what brings dignity and makes it a real, you know, public space for people. So it's not just about one demographic existing out there. It's kind of like these buildings are the canyon walls, and we can start to talk about experience that the architecture starts to frame. Lee Prevo from Boundary Design is going to walk us, sorry, Greg Stewart.
Just nailing in for Lee Prevo today. So this is looking at the site plan. And really what this is, the exercise of taking and standing on the shoulders of the great work that had already happened. So with the ASP, oh, one back. We'll get there. Oh. So just, there we go. So the site plan. So standing on the shoulders of the ASP, and all the engagement that Kelly talked about, and then our collaboration with the YWCA, it's how to take all these great ideas, and rather than reinvent the wheel, build on ideas. So it's all about what we heard. And what we heard clearly was that context matters. So what Matthew was just talking about, this place is special. And whatever we do has to be about this place and of the land. So that was really important, and something that we took to heart as a design team. So what we also heard was that natural materials and landform, so the same, I guess, a microcosm of what's happening within the valley, the forces that shaped the land, the water, the ice that was here in the past, the wind. We wanted those forces to be present on the site, so that's where the form comes from. So again, grounded in this context, we heard clearly that we needed to be a good neighbor. And that meant more than just the neighbors adjacent or across the street. It was more than just within the context of Canmore, the Bow Valley. We're talking about being a good neighbor to wildlife, wildlife corridors. What we do matters. So from a regenerative design point of view, we wanted to make sure that every move that we did, it's not just benefiting the people that live on our site or visit our site, but everything around it. So all very important. We also heard the importance, again, of place in what makes being on that side of the highway different than this side of the highway. different than this side of the highway in terms of capturing sunlight and really trying to protect against the wind and think strategically how you deal with a neighbor being the Trans-Canada Highway. So all these things influenced what we did. And then on the site, we were able to come up with a configuration that works with the land and start to feed in amenities. So amenities on the site from a programming point of view, when we talk about a cafe and a restaurant and a boutique grocery store, you know, really it's about a daycare spilling out onto the site and how that can help energize and activate the site. And other things to animate and activate the space were a plaza that can operate year-round that really talks about what Matthew was speaking to about capturing sun and being able to be outside longer during the year. We wanted a site that was driven by pedestrian circulation and that bikes were the star. So we talked about a structure for housing and storing bicycles being central on a plaza, so it becomes a feature, not something that we hide in the basement. And then, you know, play spaces, flexible green space, again, connecting and coordinating with the town in terms of building off of the mobility and transit strategies. So what we do on the site can feed into that, so how we get people across the highway, how we connect them up and down the valley, and how we, on foot and on bike, be able to connect throughout the community. Next. And this is a hand drawing, which just was an attempt to get you into the design. So help you feel what it's going to be like to be in the plaza space between the buildings. You know, we're still focusing on the views. We're grounded in this place, but the idea that, you know, the cycle storage facility can be a central piece, and then from that, connecting to a cafe or a restaurant and have shade structures outside and, you know, plant, native plant material where we're capturing groundwater. But all of these things working together to create a place that, again, it's for people and it celebrates people in the place we live in. Turning it to the real Lee Prevo.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Lee Prevo with Boundary Design. It's really nice to be in front of you again. So we've heard what we learned in the community and talked about different iterations of design that are trying to achieve these. But the whole purpose of this project is trying to determine what is feasible, what is going to be viable, what could get built, constructed, funded. And so that's what I want to talk to you about. And so, what is feasibility? In the case of this project, we're trying to meet at the start, at the highest level, the requirements of the key funders that are out there, Canamorgan Housing Company and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, who funded the feasibility study that we're doing here. And in the old days, feasibility would have only been about the economics of it. How do we find an economic solution to build? But we're really lucky in the way the funding programs are done now, in that they're looking for a lot more. They're looking for inclusivity. They're looking for levels of affordability that can meet a broad range of the population. They're looking for support systems that will help people be successful on these sites. And the way they build their affordable housing programs is you have to be able to demonstrate these characteristics in the project that we're looking at. So I'll go through a few of those. At a high level, we're talking about six, sorry, four six-story buildings that can accommodate 270 units residentially. Community hub and retail space of about 2,500 square meters. In that community hub, we were very specific in trying to respond to things we heard in the community. Probably the most, the highest aspiration, most desirable used to include down here was childcare space. So we've included 6,000 square feet of childcare space, a proper size to bring childcare to the site. We also heard interest in having community support, so people have something to do on the sites. We've designed space for something like a cafe, something like a restaurant, something like a small grocery or pharmacy. Activities that people like to do in their community and that they can, that will support the people who are living here. We also have community hub space, which is meant to include items like wraparound services for residents, social enterprise space, space for, space for nonprofits that want to be on the site, a way of bringing multiple uses to the site, generating some revenue to help the financial analysis, but also, again, filling in gaps in the community that we heard through our engagement process. Greg talked about this, but we've included significant bike stall space, two spots per unit. And that's meant to address what we hear from everyone we talk to is that this is a very high-activity community, and people have more than one in their families, and we need place for that. And then, of course, we're able to provide 80 stalls of surface parking on this site. From a feasibility standpoint, we can achieve this level of development on the site here, but under the land use, we're able to build this site out a little bit further if required. So there's space here in the bottom-left corner to do another building or another series of buildings that could achieve another 60 units of residential and even more community hub, social enterprise, retail space that we look at. In reference to the ASP, this meets all of the conditions that were in there, from number of residential units, maximum space for, for social, sorry, community retail, community commercial retail units. I'm speaking too fast and I'm stumbling. Parking, bike stalls, and achieving a mixed-use solution on the site. Next slide, please. The other part of feasibility is affordability. So the whole purpose of these programs is to drive affordability into communities where it's really hard to achieve. And so we're looking at not only how many units can be affordable, what levels of affordability can we achieve here? In this instance, 100% of the units will be affordable against every definition across Canada. 80% of them will be at that deep affordability level, so more than 35% below the market rate, the market rental rate for housing. And then the other, the other percentage will be at 20% below the market rate. So significant affordability on this site. We're also being able to include a whole mix of units in here. So instead of just affordable units at the studio size or the one-bedroom size, it's spread out over the whole mix of studio, one, two, and three bedrooms. That's a significant level of three-bedroom units for any type of development. There's probably a dozen other items that are, that we need to respond to in terms of feasibility and funding, and funding applications, but there are some critical ones that I'll talk about here. So sustainability. Sustainability matters for a whole variety of reasons, but in terms of these projects, in addition to addressing carbon emissions in the community, we're also looking to drive down operating costs. And so FCM and CMHC set very similar targets of significantly improved energy efficiency on a, on a building, about 20% below what would typically be built. In the instance of this, we're able to achieve about a 50% improvement over a traditional building that would be built. Using techniques like high-performing building envelope, climate, cold, cold-climate sourced air heat pumps, these are really important because they don't only deliver heating, they also deliver cooling in the summer. And as we see the climate changing, we're seeing more and more days of extreme overheating in the summer, so these address those. We'll have an array of photovoltaic rooftop solar supporting this. And in terms of the minimum, the maximum calculation, we'll be significantly enough below the SM and CMHC targets that they will generate the maximum grant that's available. If you remember from our conversation around Christmas, the grants directly related to the percentage of energy efficiency improvement that you get on the budget. We approach this from an accessibility standpoint as well, with a focus on universal accessible design for all of the units. What we're able to achieve is 63% of the project as a whole would meet the universal design qualifications. That's sufficient to meet the requirements of both of the funding providers we're looking at. For the remainder of the units, we're looking, we're trying to achieve a visibility approach. So that's where there are some improvements in terms of door width, in terms of some turning radiuses, not all of them, and switch heights, and a number of elements like that. As we go through the design development stage, I think we can get a little more specific on some of the units, whether they be vision-impaired suites, hearing-impaired suites. There are options that we can include when we go to design development, so a little bit improvement on accessibility. And lastly, financial. The best way to think about the financial is if this project is completed, will it be able to be sustained in perpetuity with the revenues that are generated? And if you think about a building that has 100% affordability, of course, the revenues are going to be lower than what we would typically see. In this instance, because we have the Y as a potential lead operator of this, they have significant fundraising capabilities that are not available to most nonprofit housing providers. So in this instance, we're able to find a viable solution, a financial solution, that will make this project viable in perpetuity. So you can see there's a significant level of grants from provincial and federal governments. That includes the land contribution. There's a level of $36 million of financing. They call it a long-term repayable loan. It's essentially a mortgage that gets paid off over time for a percentage of the, of the amount of the project. And then the YDAV says fundraising is a massive portion of the dollars that would, that are available to make this project viable.
So I just wanted to ask a question on that point, if I, if I may. We, of course, are moving towards creating a livability reserve based on our livability tax program, and its purpose is, I mean, there's going to be a lot of need for those funds. Will it potentially be needed to top up here, let's say grants don't come through or, or whatnot?
I think it's a little bit too early to say. I mean, of course, we're welcome, we would welcome any grant from any organization.
Yeah.
But at this point, well, I think what we've identified is the numbers that we need to see from various organizations.
Right.
They're aligned with what we would traditionally see, and so we're comfortable with this at this stage. But yes, of course, it's nice to have a reserve if necessary.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, we're looking to, to get a substantial number of non-market units going, and so we're going to need to spread that money as far as we can, but that's also another potential source should there need to be some, be some juggling there. And I'm seeing nodding heads from administration there, so.
That's very welcome.
Great, thank you.
The real target there, then, is something called debt coverage ratio. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It essentially means that after, when you take, you subtract operating costs from all of your revenues, whatever is left over needs to be able to service the debt plus a 10% cushion, and we're able to achieve that in the model that we've come up with so far. So that's where we've gotten to today. We believe we have a feasible project to move forward with. We believe it meets the requirements of the town, the requirements of ASP, the requirements of all of the funders that we would be targeting, and we have a financial solution that would actually work. If this moves forward, our next steps would be to begin a design development phase, so that's the significant design and engineering that goes in through this project, to finalize what it would look like, all of the specifications. Through that process, we would be applying for funding to CMHC and FCM and likely the Alberta Partnership Program as well. When we get through that, we've got into the permitting stage, and our goal would be to bring forward at least one building, fully permitted and ready for groundbreaking by around April next year in time for the conclusion of the land reservation.
And I see that there's also the potential for growth of a fifth building as well.
Yes.
It has been noted in our agenda that there was a potential of a closed session. Are we going to need that closed session? And should I do, should we go into that now? Okay, all right. So thank you for, everyone for the presentation, and I will now move the council, close the meeting to the public to prevent disclosure of advice, recommendations, or policy options developed for the public body in accordance with Section 24 Sub 1 Sub 1 of the Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act. All those in favor, carried unanimously. All those in favor, carried unanimously.